It is February 9th. This is a meeting for our public hearing for the 2021 Tuffenborough budget, as well as discussion and voting on the warrant articles. You can listen in via telephone. The United States toll-free number is 1-877-309-20773. The access code is 611-426-261. Please note that during the hearing, you will be asked questions and interact with the Budget Committee and during public input using the online services. However, you will only be able to listen to the meeting via telephone. If you have any issues attending this meeting electronically, please use the aforementioned instructions. Please call 603-569-5903. So I am calling the meeting to order. We have a forum and we'll begin with the pleasure of leading. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we will now commence our hearing. Our assignment to work this evening is that I will be going over the budget, line by line item, tell you what the amounts were, trying to point out anything that was interesting in that line. Of course, anybody who has any questions, either via the phone or the public who's here, please feel free to ask those questions. And if anybody on the committee wants to add anything, by all means, do so. Very well, so starting off with line 4130, the executive line. This is the figure for this year was $114,289. Notable reason for increases were the change in personnel. Okay, so it's primarily salary line item. Any questions on this one? Okay, moving along to line 4140, election registrations via statistics, kind of known as Town Clerk's line. This year was $86,030 versus last year's $93,251. This one was due to primarily the fact that we had considerably fewer elections this year. It was one increase, I believe, because we had to buy a new printer for the town clerk. Questions? Moving on then, line 4150, financial administration. This one was $153,803 versus $131,743 last year. Increase of $22,060. This was primarily due to the computer maintenance and IT support for the town's electronic system. Okay, then, moving on, 4152, reevaluation of property. This line was $46,980. This was the normal amount for our rolling assessment of town property. Okay, then, line item 4153, legal expenses. The Budget Committee voted for $63,350 versus the selectmen's request of $63,850. The Committee lowered the amount of the requested amount by the selectmen by $500, and that was going to be in the legal expenses for the trustees of trust fund. The request was $600. We lowered it to $100. This is a new line item this year. And we just thought that barring any kind of precedent, that $100 should be sufficient. Questions? Moving on then to 4155, personnel administration. This line item is $633,044. To the credit of the selectmen, the insurance costs this year were down over last year, which was very nice to see. The notable increase, of course, is in the retirement fund, which is up $24,496. This is a case primarily of the unfortunate state of New Hampshire putting the responsibility onto the towns for things that they used to cover themselves. It is not just a problem with the town of Tuffenborough. It's a problem right straight across the board. It's the largest increase in the school district election this year, for example. But there's nothing we can do. During our discussion, we did have, as we have every year, a discussion with our selectman member about more participation in employee costs for the employee participation for the insurance cost. But we're still going to be going on where we are for another year. And as I said, the insurance costs were down this year, and that is to be commended. Any questions? Moving on, 4191, planning and zoning. Line item this year was $26,227. One of the things that has been discussed was going to be the completion of the master plan review. And Matt Yeller explained to us the process. It's going to be going to hopefully have that completed in the very near future. Other than that, there was nothing really out of the ordinary in that line. Questions? Line item 4194, general government buildings. Lot involved, $138,500 this year versus $128,822 last year. One of the major increases was going to be adding a sprinkler system to the town hall property, seal coating and track filling at the central fire station. During our discussions on this line, it was suggested, and hopefully will be enacted in the coming years, is a spreadsheet developed showing what the expenses are per building. Okay, so that's... And in doing so, also trying to show what the cost of doing business is for each department for the whole picture. In other words, we can look at the police department and see what the whole picture will be. We got the facility. We'll see what the total cost of the fire department might be, total cost of the library, so on and so forth. But that's something that's going to have to be worked out in the eight years to come. Questions? Moving on, line item 4195, cemeteries. This year is $29,961. Not a lot of radical changes over last year. In fact, it was the same amount as the 2021 budget. Susie Wicks explained to us some of the ongoing things they were trying to do as far as reclamation and maintaining our multitude of local cemeteries in town. Moving on then, number line item 4196, insurance. This includes, of course, workers' compensation, property casualty insurance for all of our town employees' comp and our property. Of course, workers' compensation is a payroll-driven number. Our payroll was down this year. So we're going to be saving some money on that line item. The property casualty line item was up, but then again, we have increased value and diversion certainly by this diversion having the new library, which obviously probably doubled or tripled assessed value for insurance purposes. Okay, no questions. Other general government, line item 4199, $475. This is mainly very much up to the Joint Safety Committee and the Capital Improvement Committee's request to have some help as part of printing, so on and so forth. Moving on, line item 4210, the police department. Of course, police department number is primarily driven by salaries, as most of all of our things are in town. The new equipment line went down this year for $21,000, $10,000. All in all, it was a very small increase in that whole line for the police department this year.
Ever question?
Yes, Joe.
I'm the police department office assistant, Andy Keer. Did you get somebody to work the phones and the radio at the office yet?
We did, and then they left. And the hour for Jessica closed the other day. So I'll be interviewing somebody to fill that in.
Okay, so we're going to keep that line in there then, right?
Yes, and my plan is also, obviously, some work needs to be done to catch up. So there's extra hours that need to get caught up with.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the police department? Moving on, the ambulance. Line item 4215, $196,931. This is our contract for our contract to ambulance services. It's a one-year contract. Okay, then, moving on to 4220, fire department. As with the police department, of course, we have increases in our salary. There was nothing really that jumped out of the ordinary this year other than normal expenses. Questions? Moving on, 4240, building inspection. Line item for $67,920. Pretty much all expenses, and that was salary-driven. Very well, moving on, 4290, emergency management. Line item for $21,703. The largest expense, of course, in this line item was in the equipment area, and these were primarily due to the need for supplies to deal with COVID-19. Questions? Okay, then, moving on, 4312, highways and streets. Line item for $624,325. Major increases this year were the area of tree removal, apron paving, road striping, and increase to spring maintenance and fall maintenance. Certainly, a lot of things that have not been done in past years were playing a certain amount of catch-up. And that was the area where those were primarily impacted. Questions? Line item 4313, other highways and streets. Line item for $5,000. This is the normal repair to docks and bridges. There has been $13,600 in cumber of $20,20 for union warp design permitting. Very good. Line item 4324, solid waste disposal. Total is $453,959. Once again, salary increases took care of some of that. It's still expensive to get rid of our refuse, the... all the different disposal fees actually still are continuing to increase. Before we move on to this, I'd like to say on behalf of the Budget Committee, even though he is not here this evening, I'd like to thank Clay Galdor, a retired as an employee for the town, and commend him for all the good work he's done for us over the years. Certainly, the way he presented his budget to us made it clear and understandable. And he was always on top of his game for that. So we thank you very much and wish him well. Line item 4414, animal control, $1,150. This is primarily the need for animal control and animal... General, which generally goes to Lake Region Humane Society in case they have to house anything. Line item 4414, I'm sorry?
I have a question, go ahead, please. I want to go back to animal control.
Yes, sir.
And I want to know who's in charge. If you have a complaint, okay, other than the police, the local sheriff show up. I just don't understand the whole process. They're limited in their ability to act. All they can do is talk to a person or the owner. That's as far as they can go in this town with our police. Do you know much about this at all? I'm asking the question, but yeah, I see Andy over there. You know, and I'll talk about personal thing because I had some problems and the problem finally stopped. But nobody wants to seem to act on it. I say, well, call animal rescue and get rid of the dogs. Oh, we can't do that. We have to give you a notice first. I don't know the rules and regulations of what's going on other than making a complaint. So I just, from personal experience, and I just don't know how it works. I'm looking at the monies that we're spending for it, but I don't know the behind the scenes of what's happening. Andy, can you help me?
So this right here is if we have animals that were seized, we investigate animal control issues, animal issues. We are, for better word, ECOs also. This also covers dog license costs. That's typically what a big chunk of it, this 756 was, was buying licenses. It's also some money there in case we pick up some stray dogs and they don't get recovered. Then we have to pay the Lake Region Humane Society or Conway, depending upon how many dogs there are or animals, the fees. We've also spent, we had an investigation a few years back, which we had to take two horses, that came out of this budget. As far as what you're talking about, we have to go back to state laws to what we can and can't enforce and how we deal with it is...
So you're limited in your power to do something other than talk to the person and give them a notice, is that correct? You can't do anything about it?
It depends on the circumstance of what's going on. We typically try and talk to the person first to see if they can deal with it. If it's a barking dog complaint, if it's during the daytime, it has to be continuous over a half hour. And frankly, we had some cases we took to court over that, and it didn't work out too well. So I'm kind of gun-shy about going on barking dog complaints during the daytime. Nighttime, it's a little different, but still, we try and work with the person first.
All right, I just wanted to bring that up on camera as a question.
We do have some ability to enforce it, but we have to follow within the RSA 466 to...
Okay, so you are in charge?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on then, line item 4415, health agencies. This line item was $44,744. This was down from last year because we had two organizations, Blue Moon and Bus Service, and Wolfboro Senior Center, who we did a deal with in the past, did not come forward with a request this year. Okay, no questions. Moving on, 4442, direct assistance. Line item for $1,225, which was dramatically less than it was in the 2020 budget. As was explained by Chip, private groups seem to be taking up an awful lot of the burden that the town had been looking at in the past. Line item 4520, Park... I'm sorry, yes, Joe.
I'm sorry. You know, I sit here all year and I keep, try to keep my mouth shut, but that doesn't happen. So I get a chance to ask the questions. Now, I want to go back to 4415, and I want to talk about the Blue Moon Bus Service. Okay, and I haven't heard much about them at all. I don't know if they even had a request this year.
They didn't.
They did not?
No.
Blue Moon.
No requests this year. As I said, Blue Moon, the Wolfboro Senior Center and the Blue Moon Bus Service did not put in a request this year.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that part. Okay, all right, thank you.
Where was it? Parks and Recreation, line item 4520, $57,111, which is a little bit less than last year. Of course, this whole line item was underspent in 2020 due to all the restrictions due to COVID. The request this year is looking towards hopefully better days this summer when people can use the services offered by Parks and Recreation. Yes, Joe.
So I have another question with the town of Wolfboro. We had discussions with the selectmen during the course of the year when I was here. $16,000. We haven't used that many services with the town, and there was talk about reducing the amount that we were going to send to them. Do you know anything about that?
Well, we did not use the services this year that we normally use.
Right, but we're still going to give them the same amount of money we generally do. Did I get that right?
Well, we didn't.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, I see that. 2020, all right. But we have it on for the 20... Where are we here? All right, so now it's up to...
They were going to discuss it with the town of Wolfboro so it might not all get spent next year.
Okay, so we've still appropriated the $16,000 for it.
Okay. What we're working on is some sort of calculation on Wolfboro's part because the money is to offset the cost between non-resident participation in their programs and resident participation. We were paying a resident rate for participation. So that difference is where this money's come from. We need to know how many kids are participating in their summer programs and how many kids are...
Do they send us a report or do...
They haven't. They haven't, but they say they do the calculations. So we're trying, we're still in discussions on that. I don't think we're ready to say we're not going to pay them.
All right, thanks.
Moving on, line 4550, hybrid. This line item is down from last year because we had a change in senior payroll. The line also includes increases in the utilities for the new building. $4583, patriotic services for $1,500. This is a study line item from year to year. It takes care of decorating for World Day flags for the cemetery cemeteries. $4589, gifts and donations for $500. This, of course, is for remembrance and gifts for retirees and notable people who might have passed in town that the town feels should be remembered. $4612, conservation for $19,100. There was a change in the request for, it was a $5,000 change request for administrative assistant. A request to make downward measure. Increase, and of course, it's been getting an awful lot of press actually, the environmental study for the 19 mile break. Line item 4619, other conservation, $2,300. This was, once again, has been a considerable drop from the 2020 budget. The biggest drop, of course, in that item was for Tuffenborough, excuse me, for milfoil control because of changes in milfoil mitigation. Moving on, line item 4711, long-term bonded notes for $153,711. This is our principal for the year on the fire station. And finally, line item 4712, interest long-term on bonds and notes. This is the interest on the loan for the fire station.
4721, Jim.
I'm sorry, 4721. This is the end of my notebook. I've got a little dyslexic, I apologize. 4721. I'm sorry, 4721, I ended my note writing a little bit, I apologize, 4721. And once again, that is the interest. So the sum of our budget line items for this year are $4,195,419,600 versus last year, budget amount of $4,118,248, which is approximately a 2% increase over last year. And that is our budget. Included in our packet this evening, courtesy of Helen, are some wraps. Showing our five-year operating spenders, expenses, excuse me, our 2021 budget detail by department, as well as our budget versus last year's budget, our budget versus last year's expenditure. Helen, you want to speak to this, because you actually put to the beginning?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, the five-year actual, there are four years of actual expenditures compared to this year's, next year's budget by department. As usual, the largest areas are the largest services that we get, the fire department, police department, transfer station, and the highway. And then the executive and admin is the next largest, that's 12%, which is what it takes to run a town essentially, to support those services. Everything else is pretty much 2% or 3%, except for the library, which runs 7%. The percentages are pretty consistent across the year. And every, every area except the town clerk and elections are up a little bit this year. And the town clerk and elections line is down because of the number of collections we have. And then the second page that you have is what everybody keeps talking about, is I broke everything out by department, and you can see it's also broken out salaries and benefits, administrative costs, outside contracts, legal, building costs, equipment, road maintenance, community service, and debt service, and all of them assigned to the department that they support. So in the big, in the pie chart on the left, what you can see are the services that are included in your taxes, the largest being the fire department, the police department, the highway department, and the transfer station, and the executive line that supports those services. And on the right-hand side, what you see is the same number broken down by the type of expense, so what, what it takes to run those departments. The salary and benefits typically is the largest, it runs 49.3%, followed by the cost, the actual cost of road maintenance and administrative costs. Any questions?
As always, thank you.
Excellent work. Excellent.
Will you do a mail-in in the future? Will you do mail-ins for us in the future?
I just got to restate my objection to the calculation increase. Helen, I think I can put this, because we are comparing apples to oranges. We did not have an 8% increase year to year. We actually, I just spent the budget from last year by $250,000, and we've only got a $77,352 increase. A $4 million budget, so that $77,000 increase year to year is...
A budget is, a budget is your best estimate at the time of what you're going to spend. So just to compare one year's guess to the next year's guess, I don't think is helpful. What you really need to look at is what you actually spent, and then base what you think you're going to spend in the next year on that. So that's my rebuttal.
Our disagreement will remain.
Yes, it will.
Because I think what would get more helpful would be to set a goal for 2021 on how much of this budget we should spend. Because we've got the $250,000...
I won't be here to argue that with you. You're going to have to find someone else.
Is that going to come down to swords?
I'll meet you with a galling pistol in the driveway.
Okay, before, we're going to step, I'd like to step a little bit out of order of the budget before we start talking, or hearing, excuse me, before talking about the warrant articles, so look at the estimated revenue for next year. This was finalized by the selectmen yesterday morning, showing a estimated total revenue This is for not only the operating budget, but for any improved warrant articles. There is one thing that was provided yesterday morning the selectmen want to change, and I would like to have a certain amount of discussion on, and that's the line item 3352, meals and room tax for $120,000. As was changed yesterday morning, I really don't feel comfortable with that number. The reason I don't feel comfortable with that number is the fact that it is almost within a couple thousand dollars of what we had this year. And I don't see how the two-thirds, you know, two-thirds of the restaurants either close or not working capacity, certainly a lot of open hotel rooms in the state. I don't know if the state is going to be able to come up with that $120,000 for this year. And I realize they have done nothing to indicate to us so far, I'm kind of repeating your conversation yesterday morning, but that argument doesn't hold water, I'm concerned. I don't think we're going to be seeing that kind of money.
So we're caught, caught between a rock and a hard place.
Yes.
We haven't gotten any official or quasi-official information from the state that we should adjust the figure. At the same time, we're obligated by the Department of Revenue Administration not under state revenue or over state revenue, that matters. So without any reasoning or fact-based reasoning from the state on reducing that number, I think we kind of stuck where we are. That said, I'm kind of in agreement, but I'm not certain how it's calculated either. I don't know whether the revenues that get paid in 2021 are going to be the revenues that were collected in 2019. I don't think the state could quick enough to actually get to 2020 where the final is. But that's just a...
I guess my point was, from my point, I would tend to err in the side of caution, and I don't, and I would not necessarily think they were going anywhere near close. I would say if we worked on 65, 70% for our own thinking, 60, 65, 70% of 2020 numbers, we might be probably even better off. It's not going to change things in the, of things any great amount, but I thought I did want to bring it up.
The other, you know, the safety valve is October when we set the tax rate. If we find that in October, things have dramatically changed, and let's say we get $10,000 in lunch and meal, I mean, that's the point in time where our under designated reserve is tapped, and we have to figure this out really what happened in 2021. So we're giving an estimate today to form a budget, but when we set the rate, the tax rate in October, the real revenue could be distracted, or a lot more, a lot of that is included at that point. So there isn't, that's a coincidence, but this isn't the last time we visit this sheet. So as we go along, we keep looking. But the same thing holds true with a lot of lines. I mean, you look at hand and bill of taxes, the summer camps were all closed, we still collected money on that hand and bill of taxes, it wasn't as much as I'd like to collect. But I don't know what the situation in 2021 is going to be in the long term either.
Well, I'd say, I bring up, I bring up the room and meals, as it was presented yesterday morning, the final decision was the biggest area, and that's, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on that one. So, no further questions on revenue? We're going to go to the warrant articles. Now, for purposes of, for purposes of the public who might be listening in, because of a snow out last weekend, maybe scheduled meeting, we, as a budget committee, have yet to vote on the warrant articles for our support up or down. We will be doing this after, after the budget, we'll be convening, the meeting of the regular budget committee meeting, and at that time, we'll be taking our votes for both, the final vote for both the overall budget and for the warrant article. So I am going to, I'm going to read the warrant articles to everybody, and then we can have some, if the public cares to have discussion, or we want to have discussion amongst the board this time, we can do that. Article number three is a non, is a non-money item, so I'm not going to bother with that. We're going to move on to article four. To see the town will vote to raise, will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,600,000 to build and equip a new police facility and authorize issuance of no more than $685,742 of bonds and notes according to provisions of the National Financial Act. To authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and the maturity of other items, other terms thereof. Further, authorize withdrawal of $600,000, excuse me, $664,258 from previously established police capital reserve fund, $250,000 to come from an awarded USDA grant. That is article four. And I am also going to take a certain amount of liberty right now because I want to look at article five at the same time, for purposes of discussion, because we are dealing with the, with the same issue essentially in two different manners, if you allow me. Article five is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,600,000 to build and equip the police facility. Further, authorize the withdrawal of $664,258 from a previously established police facility capital reserve fund, $250,000 to come from an awarded USDA grant, and $400,000 to come from the undesigned fund balance. $285,742, $42 to be raised from taxes. This article is contingent on article four not passing. If article four passes, this article will be null and void. So for purposes of discussion, we're dealing with the same, with the same issue as far as police facility, and just two different ways of funding.
And the explanation that will happen at town meeting when this goes forward is we've gotten, the business meeting of the town isn't until next, so we'll get a better number with regard to interest rates and things before that meeting. But currently, the interest rate is hovering around 2%.
Sorry, did you say 2%?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry. So article four, could be a bond hearing, or we're having a bond hearing for article four, wherein we're going to finance $685,742 at 2%. A tender payment on that works out to about $90,000, just a little less than $90,000 a year in interest and principal. As a, excuse me, as a comparison, we just made our last payment on the ambulance, which was about $84,000, principal and interest. So you're replacing one payment for another payment if you go with a financing option. With regard to the article five, where we're going to take $400,000 out of the undesigned fund balance, clearly had $1,135,229 as of the end of 2019 in the undesigned fund balance. We underspent the 2020 budget by about $250,000. So there's going to be about a million, close to a million four in the undesigned fund So we would still, even taking $400,000 out to do a one and done on the police station, paid for it all in a year, we'd still have a little over a million dollars in our undesigned fund balance, which is more than enough to accommodate any needs that we might have. And the reason we, just to end my explanation, the reason we put two articles in there, actually three, if they both could defeat it, put some more money into a reserve fund, is to establish, I know the budget committees, some members of the budget committee are in favor of financing, the selectmen are less in favor, if not, not in favor of financing. So it's, I think it's up to the elected, or the body politic of the town to decide which, in which direction they want to go.
So your intention is, no matter how the budget committee votes on this particular up and down in favor, you are still going to go forward with two issues?
Yes, because you're going to, well, I'll wait to see how you vote, and that's fine. Your recommendation and unrecommendation of article four will be posted right there, as it will on article five, where the selectmen have voted 3 to nothing or 2 to nothing in favor of article five. The purpose of doing two articles as opposed to one, another purpose, is that you have a three-fifths requirement of voters for bond issue. You only have a 50 plus one requirement for a regular one-year purchase. So there could very well be 58% of the population that wants to have a police station this year, well, that's not enough to get a bond issue. So that alternative goes away and then one happens.
Have you ever had a precedent for doing anything like this before?
You're going to talk to her?
I just, I, when I saw it originally, I thought to myself, this is just going to really confuse the issue.
How is it going to confuse it?
It's going to, well, anytime that you, that you present something to the electorate without firm support across the board, generally at the higher level, it gets confusing. So now you...
Well, okay, if you...
I believe you just said the recommendation, but I can appreciate where you're going with it.
But I don't think on its face that the choice is confusing.
I don't know, it's an either or, I understand that.
You're offering them the choice of either paying for it in one year or financing it over 10 years. I mean, if we had our druthers, we would present a warrant without financing. But I'm taking my lead from the budget committee of saying, we wanted to look at financing this building as opposed to paying for it in one year. The only way to do that is to present a warrant article with finance. So it's...
I just look at...
I mean, I guess I could have strong-armed the budget committee and said, no, you're not going to get a finance warrant article this year on a police station, you can, but then you're, we're stuck in a situation where you people are going to, let's say, vote against having a one and done warrant article. So now I'm stuck at town meeting, or we're stuck at town meeting, with a warrant article that's not supported by the budget committee, but it is supported by the selectmen.
Well, why did the selectmen recommend both of them?
The selectmen recommended they both be on the warrant.
So when we vote, is that what we're voting?
You're voting, you get an up and down vote.
We get an up and down one. I think that's confusing, that we get up and down vote, but you don't.
Because you don't get to change the numbers.
I'm sorry, Bill?
If I can win, to, to address your point, the sense of our board is that a one-and-done is the way, the way to do it. We're not only looking at the current year and looking at keeping the tax impact of the town on our taxpayers as predictable and steady as we can. We're also looking at out-year projects that we're very aware of, that people continue to come to us about, that we feel the town needs to address. Things like substantial drainage issues on some of the roads, an increase in the amount of road reconstruction that we need to do. We've got waterfront projects, we have drainage project projects for water quality on the lake, all of which cost money. So if we can address this in a way that keeps the tax impact on, on the taxpayers in line and get it done, we can continue to move forward toward the projects. I, I, I would offer my opinion that if the budget committee is overwhelmingly on the same side of this issue as we are, this warrant is not, is not finished. It's a draft warrant. We, you know, going forward from here, we don't have to go forward with two, with two articles as a choice. And if there's overwhelming support on this body for an approach that we feel is the right thing to do, we may, we may remove that other choice to clarify things going forward. We, we included the bond issue, our funding article, because I understand there was a lot of interest in taking that approach on the budget committee. So we're going to have a bond hearing. We'll look at all of this. We'll have the numbers all laid out. Everybody will have an opportunity to see what the impacts, both current year and, and in the future, of borrowing and paying it off over a series of years as opposed to going forward and getting it done in a single year.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Why was there a 2-0 vote and a 3-0 vote? Why was there not a 3-0?
Well, because one of our members is not available right now.
So that first one came up very recently, that, that was the bond, the bond of them?
We said that
Well, he wasn't available, but the 3-0 on the second one.
Yeah, right. We, we added that one two, three weeks ago. Yeah.
Gary?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Bill and Chip. I understand what you're saying, that the town is aware that there's other projects that need to be done, and that it would like to have a smoothness to the spending function of those things over the next couple of years. What's not clear to me is in your statements, which one of these proposed articles seems to work in the favor of leveling costs for you? I'm not sure you're, you're making a statement to that effect, and I'm not hearing it.
Well, let me, let me restate. In my, in selectman Markison's opinion, the single-year approach is, is the approach that does that.
Okay.
Eddie?
During our discussions over the last several weeks, there was also an item brought up that there may be additional monies coming forward for, in approximately $250,000, $250,000, that's a second grant. And I'm wondering if that is being pursued, and the likelihood that that would be received, thus increasing the total overall monies received for grants.
Well, it's definitely being pursued. We won't have any, and as far as I've been told, all of the Ts have been crossed and Is dotted. But we're not going to have any response on that until March, or after that, I think, April, before they award the grants. So we've got, we can't, we can't include that now. We may include that in the business meeting. I mean, the other part about
By statute, the, the warrant has to be done by the 22nd. So, once it's, once it's finalized, that's what we go to town meeting with. That's not to say that on the floor at town meeting, we can't amend it.
We're going to amend it?
But we can't keep changing the warrant after the 22nd.
Okay. I appreciate your point.
And we're pushing the, if we do it all in here, we push the warrant, it's up a little over a million dollars. Just to give you an example, last year we were at $977,000. So we're not that far away from where we were last year. And we
But
Well,
You're right.
We still have to do all the mathematical stuff that happens, the grant, the setting of the tax rates, et cetera, that come October. So there's a lot of moving pieces going forward, but I mean, we feel confident that it's a, it's a better way to go, but I, I'll reiterate that you folks felt serious about financing. I didn't feel that I could come before you without a finance option.
Well, it's, it's $685,742 of new money. Because I don't count the $400,000 in hand as old money, because that's money that we had. And the unaccounted fund balance that should be going is reduction for taxes. The way it would have been if we were not looking at any issue like this.
Excuse me, $400,000?
I said $400,000. So it's not too, if, the, the one-year, the one-year deal is not $285,000, it's $685,000. And I feel that's, for town this size, that's an awful lot in one year. Plus, I'm a firm believer in the time, in the time value of money, is that
And hence, we have two articles for you.
Yes. Okay, I'm just, I'm just making the same a fact, though. That's why we're having a hearing, so we can get voices out there. Yes.
Now, as an individual who works in the building trades all the time, I have real doubts that this project to be able to be brought in for $1.6 million. Watching how materials have gone up, and prices on petroleum and things like that, what's going on, that's a real concern of mine. I'd love to see it happen for that, but I don't see how this construction manager will be able to do it. I understand the financing options really well. But what I see underlying here is that the chances of getting this to pass by putting both of these on are increased tenfold, because when you don't get your three-fifths majority, you only need 50% of one vote on the next article. And so, that's my take on the whole thing. Very clever, very clever.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Assuming one or the other of these two articles pass, what is the real-life earliest date that we could stick a shovel in the ground?
Well, the meeting, the business meeting of the town has been postponed till May 15. So it would be May 16th would be the absolute earliest day you could put a shovel in the ground.
Well, what's, what's likely, yeah, date, though? I mean, getting every, all the contract signed, and getting the work started.
We're going to have all the bidding done prior to the business meeting on the 15th of May. So there's no reason not to expect that within a, a day or so, they're going to start the project. Everybody that
Okay.
needs to start will be, will, will award the bids, and it'll take us a, a day or two to do that, but I would not see complications.
Yeah, all right.
And if
All right, so that's, that's the plan, to move ahead directly after town meeting?
Right.
If one or the other of these passes, okay.
And if, to Guy's comment about the cost of construction, we have members today at work. And there's, I think they have a little pattern from my expectation of what costs are in certain areas. But if for some reason the world explodes, and by May 15, the pricing is $2,500,000, it's over the $1,006,000, then that boots all of this, because we certainly can't enter into a, a building project without enough funding.
Doesn't, doesn't the, that $1,006 include a substantial contingency clause?
Well, there's a contingency clause, but it's not going to cover 100% increase in, in building materials costs.
No, no.
And the contingency bill isn't coming to, coming to form until you start the, the project.
Right.
And we'll start the project
But it's still included in the big and second.
Yes.
When it's added enough.
It is, but we're not going to start a project based on a contingency clause.
No, I, I understand that, but there's some wiggle, there is wiggle room in that, in that figure.
Do you have a final price on the building?
We had one, and there, we sent it back. Because it's, you know, the whole project, including excavation, septic system, all of that. And they're still working on those numbers, but they were a little high when they first came out. So we feel $1,006 is the appropriate number.
Okay, then, that's, we've talked about article four and five. Moving on then to article six. To see the town will vote and appropriate the sum of $300,000 to be added to the previously established police facility capital reserve fund. This article is contingent on article four and five not passing. If article four or five passes, this article will be null and void. Recommended by the selectmen, 3-0. And this is just, take the money and put it in the capital reserve fund, and let our homes move on for the next year.
For all intents and purposes, it's the same amount of, of impact on the taxes as article five. And $300,000 versus $285,000, so. But yeah, the capital reserve now have 900, would end up with over a million dollars, I think, what's the interest in that being a part of?
Article seven. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $248,000 for replacement of fire rescue department self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. $219,470 to be withdrawn from our previously established capital reserve fund, with $28,530 to be raised from taxes. This was, as explained by Adam, it is the fact that our existing breathing apparatus is now pretty much out of date. And you want to speak to this one a little bit more, Adam?
Sure. As of, the, as of the end of this year, our SCBA's will reach their 15-year life expectancy, as far as it goes. The bottles in them also are, are at that. The bottles to be replaced would cost $50,000 to replace them. They will not be able to be used in new breathing apparatus if you buy it in the future, because the new breathing apparatus is going to have a different pressure. It'll be, we're going, we would be going from 4,500 PSI to 5,500 PSI. So the bottles will be useless. So you're basically wasting away $50,000 unless you can get some, some prey in on those, particularly the bottles for the, for the time period. We have been putting away, you know, in the capital reserve roughly, I think, they were slated for $27,000 wellers for this year. Well, for $28,000, you can have the packs and have everything replaced with that. So it's, to us, it makes more sense to get that situated and not have to go for $50,000 to replace bottles that basically, another year, you're trying to get out of the packs that you have. And each of those packs, we've been having a brain every couple of months or whatever. We have a brain that fails in some of the packs that cost $2,000 apiece. So they're, they're getting to the point that, to repair them, it's fairly expensive.
How many packs are you getting with this here?
I don't know if I have that written in the document. But it was going to be an air pack for each seat that we have on the, the fire apparatus, which we, which NFPA requires that we, we have there. And then there would be three that we have set aside for training purposes so that it doesn't have to be taken out of one of the trucks where the guys go out for training out of town, as far as it goes.
You're going to take one per seat for every apparatus?
One per seat for every fire apparatus, so the, the Class A pumpers. Some of them seat seven people, some of them seat six. Our rescue truck, which seats three, would have, have three minutes. Our car one carries one pack on it, just because of the space. Obviously, we can have up to five people in that, but we're not doing that in that, in that particular thing. And that, that would be our pack as far as that.
So this, this is the last, basically the last payment, so you're all set for the new stuff?
Yes. Yeah, that, that would put the packs, that puts them in service. And that also provides a spare bottle for each of the packs, which is required by the NFPA also. So it's roughly, I think it was roughly 48 bottles that we would have to replace if we were replacing them this year. So that's, that's what we're looking at, as far as the price goes.
It was for 25 SCBA packs.
Okay. Thank you for looking that up. I didn't remember to bring that to you.
Okay, then, article eight?
Oh, can I?
I'm sorry.
This is a nitpicky point, but you might want to check, because when we did the CIP report, the capital reserve balance was $220,948. So it's unusual that the amount in the reserve has dropped.
And I was going to make a comment on all of these reserves, because they're going to all change between now and May. So what's going to happen then? The warrant articles, as you go along, to reflect the actual numbers from the, from the meeting?
Okay.
And what is, and there's an amount in the fishing, we'll do a thing.
Okay, article eight. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $120,000 to purchase portable radios for the fire department. A grant in the amount of $120,000 has been applied for, and if awarded, the amount the town will receive is $90,000. If the grant is not awarded to the town, the entire amount of $120,000 is to be raised by taxation. Selectmen in favor, 3-0. Kai?
Yes, I'm sure Chip can clarify this. We asked for a grant for $120,000, and if we get that grant, we're going to get $90,000. Is there like a $30,000 process and handling fee in there? Why do we get $90,000 as for $120,000?
$30,000, a deposit on the condo, yeah. They're only going to give us a certain portion, $120,000. They're not going to give us 100%, but
It's a math, it's basically like a 75-25 grant.
Okay.
You have to come up with that. But it's, it is, after all this was done, we found that it is a little bit different. They actually will give us a little bit more money if we do get the grant. So it's actually, you know, more like a 9-10 type of grant as far as matching. But we, we kept it at $120,000, because there's a certain amount of money that it's going to take to install all the, the equipment and things like that. So if, if it comes in less, we're not using the money, you know, as far as that whole thing. It's going to go back to, to the It's going to go back to to the.
Great, thank you.
Adam, do you have any idea when you can just pay, if you're going to, when you're going to know about getting the grant or not?
No, we we have not heard anything. The the grant closing was on the the twelfth. And so it could be, you know, a couple of months before we we hear anything.
Imagine we might have some, we might have some word by May?
Yeah, that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Give me another question.
There's Joe.
Yes, for Adam. Adam, should we get the grant and buy the radios? What happens to the old radios? Can any of them be refurbished? Do we get a trade-in or anything?
No, they're, right now, they're obsolete. There is no part to repair the radios that, you know, when Motorola stops making the radios, they stop supporting them, obviously to make them obsolete so that that you'll buy new ones.
Well, we, so will we be buying new radios from the same company again?
Well, we'll buy radios from whatever company is the the best price for us to to purchase, whether it's Motorola or Kenwood, as far as it goes. It is cool.
Okay, thanks.
And and obviously, all of the companies do the same thing. They support radios for a certain period of time, and then they stop supporting them.
So what will be the shelf right, shelf life of the new radios?
I I don't know right at this this moment. The other radios that we had, as far as the portals, they were brand. So when when those radios were given to us, I thought the shelf life was already, you know, well into the whole whole situation.
All right, thank you.
Okay, then, moving on, Article nine. To see the town will vote and raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred twenty four thousand, six hundred twenty five dollars to pay a third installment towards a fire truck acquired in two thousand eighteen, as approved by voters pursuant to Article six of the two thousand eighteen town meeting. The principal amount is one hundred fifteen, one hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred fifty one dollars. The interest is eight thousand, five hundred seventy four dollars. This fire yearly lease agreement contains an escape clause. This is just our lease payment on a fire truck. Article ten, then, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred seventy thousand dollars for the preparation and paving of town roads. Personally, I still miss special for tar.
Personally, I believe tar and gravel is bad.
Article eleven, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty five thousand dollars for the design and permitting of the lake road project.
That's a bulkhead installation along the lake road pier. And so it's the design and permitting of that, and then we'll come back for the actual cost.
This is for the public benefit of anybody who's listening now. Article twelve, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seventeen thousand dollars from Mill Foil Joint Board to be deposited in the previously established Mill Foil Expendable Trust Fund. No funds to be raised from taxes. Where's the seventeen thousand dollars coming from?
The magic of the Mill Foil people.
It's coming, it's coming from surplus funds at the IMA, the, you know, the Mill Foil Joint Board.
Okay. And this goes a long way to explain our our drop in our operating budget for Mill Foil litigation.
Right, so the the Mill Foil litigation, because the cost tends to go up a now year to year, we'll get charged against a suspendable fund. And when it gets drawn down, we can replenish it. But it it will take out the year-to-year yo-yo in the budget.
Article thirteen, to see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sign, sum of one hundred thousand dollars, purchase land to add to the Great Meadows Project with twenty thousand dollars to come from a private donation and twenty thousand dollars to come from the Tufton Borough Conservation Fund. The remaining amount of fifty thousand dollars to be raised by trend taxation.
This is, this is going to take a little more explanation once it starts to go together. But basically, we took some land for tax, for compounding the taxes. Part of the land we took in earnest to the benefit of the Great Meadow project that Steve Wingate and the Conservation Commission put together. So they want to buy that out of the tax-dated property that was taken. So it's a little complicated in that we need to get an actual appraisal, appraised value for that amount of property. We have to subdivide that piece off of the, out of the larger piece that we took for taxes. And then we have to come to an agreement with the previous property owner. Because the town is going to profit by the sale, you have to apply that money to the taxes owed. So it's kind of a little bit of a moving target as far as how we approach this. But Mr. Wingate feels confident that he can put this package together. And he's also working on additional grants for this. Maybe in May, we're looking for a lot of money.
Article fourteen. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty five thousand dollars for the purpose of completing improvements to the section of Willand Road that was approved for conversion from a Class Six to a Class Five status by Article twenty four of the March tenth, twenty twenty town meeting. The sum will be reimbursed by the property owners abiding or served by such road through a betterment assessment pursuant RSA two thirty one, twenty eight through RSA two thirty one, colon, thirty one.
This particular article we ran by DRA's to do with all of our articles. I I guess the accountants in DRA figured out how to do this. But we're going to raise fifty five thousand dollars in taxes to do the improvements on that road. And we're going to get paid back in time. If you look at the revenue sheets, it's a ten-year payback on that fifty five thousand dollars. So we're getting the money back over a longer period of time than we're, than we're spending it. But this is the way DRA would have us present it.
Do we have to, do we have to factor in cost of money into the betterment number?
No.
Which in other words, they're they're giving.
There's no, yeah, there's no mechanism in the betterment, well, just the RSA's to determine interest for the money. But you guys admit, as you made it from members from our meeting on Monday, the tax value of the land on that road, the houses on that road is going to go up because now they're in a Class Six road. So that in itself, and the improvements of the road are going to increase. The tax revenue coming off that road will be increased as well as getting the betterment from the, from the road.
Excuse me, Chip, that, so that would be like, the the raise in the assessment would be kind of like charging them interest, but not really. So that would.
Yeah, it would accomplish the same thing that Gordon was asking.
Yeah, okay, good.
You don't have to avoid any charge interest.
Right, but you can cut. Cool.
Article fifteen, to see the town will vote to establish a contingency fund for the current year for unanticipated expenses that may arise and further to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars to put in the fund, said some to come from the other side from the balance. And the proportion left, appropriation left in the fund at the end of the year will lapse into the general fund. This is our contingency fund we've done first. Article sixteen. To see the town will like to reinstate mixed paper cycling at the Tufton Borough Transfer Station. This is not a money issue, so you can pass over that one. Article seventeen. The senior of the town will vote to authorize selectmen to appoint two volunteer representatives to serve in the Carroll County Broadband Communications District Planning Committee. Once again, this is not a money issue. Moving on then, Article eighteen. To see the town will vote to raise and appropriate the Budget Committee recommended sum of four million, well, I say right now at at this juncture, four million, one hundred ninety six thousand, one hundred dollars.
Ninety five.
Well, we have two, that's interesting because we have two thousands here. I'm sorry, I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon. One hundred, four million, one hundred ninety five thousand, six hundred dollars for general town operations. The selectmen recommended four million, one hundred ninety six thousand, one hundred dollars. This article does not include any special or individual warrant articles. Article nineteen deals with a non-money issue. Article twenty is a petition warrant article, which I will read and I will, just because there could be some money involved if it were to pass, but this warrant article is to have the town of Tufton Borough purchase property at North Country Villas Cooperative. And each homeowner can purchase their hard parcels at the assessed value by petition. Do we have any idea? Is this just something?
Well, it is a petition warrant, there's no escaping the fact that it has to be a warrant because it got, it is not rushed out to be run by DRA. Because there's no money involved in the in the ask for warrant, if you will. But in order for their position to be forward, they'd have to establish some money that we'd have to raise in order to fund it. And it is, I guess everyone editorialized, but it's a petition warrant article as it stands. And we have no chance but to look at.
Fire chief? I just, I have a quick answer for Joe as far as the Article eight. The other radios lasting fourteen years, roughly. So we're we're looking at, you know, hopefully fourteen years for for that.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes then our our business portion for the public hearing. And I would clear, notwithstanding that the public hearing is closed, we will now convene our regularly met Budget Committee meeting. First order of business on that is to be the unit approval of the January nineteenth minutes. Did we ever chance to open though? I saw one thing. And that was on the second page, it was mine on for sixty three thousand, five hundred dollars. That really should have something, should be mentioned as part of legal expense.
I saw the same thing, and we talked to Jane about it, so you know that if.
Thank you for coming, Joe.
And then also for the police facility construction about mid-year, we also suggested that the grant is not for one million, three hundred thirty one thousand dollars, but the proper figures are in the warrant article. I had no other comments. I move that the minutes be approved as corrected.
I'll second that.
Moving second. Barry?
Yes.
Yes, Chip? Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chip outside. We had a little bit of confusion with the with the preparation of the the agenda, so we're going to have item six hay, which is going to be the actual vote on the budget ever warrant article, which we would like to do, town would like to do right now. And we've had our hearing, we've had our explanations. I am going to, we have all heard and I've read all the articles. So what I'm going to be doing is I'm just going to be saying Article four. And then if you discuss it further, do we need to read them all again after this?
I don't think so. So, okay, so we're going to vote first time we want it?
Well, I thought, well, because the last item of warrants is the total budget. So I just think we would go down in order.
Okay.
Okay, Article four, which is, as we've already talked about, is the funding of the police station by by financing versus doing it all at once.
So just to clarify, if we vote yes to both Articles four and five, what we would be saying is that it's okay for either one of those to pass the town meeting. That's that's the intention of voting yes on both of those, is that correct?
Well, it it does kind of, it does kind of present a bit of an issue because, you know, speaking as an individual, individual board member, I have a, I have a, I have a favor of the issue. I have, I have reasonably strong feelings on both, on both sides. And so when it comes time to call for a vote, I will likely vote yes for one and no for the other. But that does not mean that we're, that I'm against the issue. Bob?
Aren't we just merely giving an option here between?
Well, that's what, well, we are, we're giving an option to the, option to the, to the voters, but.
Yeah, if the whole Budget Committee decides to vote no on Article five, I think it's the purchase in one year.
Yep.
That's just an item for discussion at the town meeting. You know, now it's not your recommendation that we go in that direction. It would be both, I don't know, four to three, four to two, whatever vote count is. That's your recommendation is to go in one direction or another. That's all the votes. And I, just as a point, point of order, I don't think I should be voting on any of these more articles from the Budget Committee. Because I've already voted on them with the selectmen, so I think I'm going to.
That's a point I'll take. Is that one of the past topics?
I, I can't remember that far back.
Sure, we have the Anna reporting my back.
I know that I did vote on the budget last, the last time we had discrepancy in the numbers. But I don't want to skew the argument on this particular article that he's talking about. Because I'm going to vote no if I do vote on the finance option. But that's not reflective of this board, if you will, reflection of this selectman. And I actually have to vote the way the selectmen voted because I'm their representative.
Can you, can you just abstain?
I can, I can, I can flip to the chair.
Why don't you just recuse yourself from voting?
I'm abstaining from it.
I was abstaining from it.
I mean, it's five, I mean, you're never going to have a tie, there's, there's a playmanship to it.
You know, the confusion thing may be, it's not, not that confusing. Would both of these be on at town meeting? Would, would they, because you're only going to be either Article four or five.
All of them.
Because you're only going to be either article four or five on that?
It's a draft, obviously.
At the meeting, this is a draft, so one of them's going to disappear at town meeting?
No, it's going to disappear at town.
Okay.
Or if the budget committee decides to vote in favor of the position that the selectmen have taken, which I think I've made clear, which is one, do it all in one year, then we have, we can eliminate article five from our consideration, we just take it off the, off the go. But I don't know, I'm not confident that that would have been those votes.
As I look at it now, I can vote no on four and no on five, and yes on six, and just so.
That's, that's up to you, Jeremy.
Just because it doesn't seem like this is a done deal, if you vote yes and no on four or five, you know, you kind of spin it in the middle somewhere, not really knowing what the hell.
Okay, no. The only difference.
I, I, I didn't.
Okay, we're buying a car. The only difference is are you going to cut me a check for the car, or are you going to finance it? That's the only difference. And so we're just asking.
Or are you going to put it off to next year?
We're going to put it off to next year. Which is certainly going to be an option.
Gary?
There's one other important thing, and I just said article four is, that's going to take two thirds majority.
Yes.
And article, and article five will be a simple majority.
That's correct.
It's three fifths now.
Yeah, three fifths, all right. Okay, well, I'm ready to vote.
I move that we vote on article four.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Barry?
Follow.
That's no? You said no? I'm sorry, didn't you?
He said no.
I said no.
Okay, it's a nasty thing. Chip's not voting. Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
No.
Warden? Chairman votes no. I'm sorry, chair votes aye.
Chair votes yes.
How did you vote, how did you record that one more time, Jane?
How did I record?
How did you record that vote?
For you?
As an aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So what's the count?
Three, three.
Three, three, and one.
So where's the time?
So you got no help from us.
Moving on then, article five.
I move that we vote on article five.
I'll second.
As written.
As written.
Thank you, we have to have that. Is there further discussion? Barry?
No.
Gary?
No.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes no.
Three, three, one again.
Really, before we. Somewhere in the minutes, I'd like to have her, before we end, I would like to have a straw vote, at least a vote of sort of favor of the project versus the finance. I'd have that at like one minute somewhere. But in the meantime, moving on to article six.
I'll move article six as written. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion on article six. Gary?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I think no.
Article seven.
Do you want to take comments from the chief?
Question.
Okay.
So, how does a 10% municipal budget act play into all this?
Does it play into until we have a vote?
I thought we could spend more than 10% than what the budget committee approved.
The budget committee is tied.
So they didn't approve it?
They didn't disapprove either. So until.
But that tie is, is not a pass.
Well, certainly we want to take that to the board. But I don't think until the vote is cast, that we have.
Further discussion on article seven.
I'll move article seven as written.
Second that.
Moving seconded. Gary?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
What's the, what are the, what's the count on that now? Are we going to have the count on each one of these?
Yeah, I think it'll be six, yes, and are you staying on this one?
So it's six, zero, one.
I think that you just, we got 4.1 million dollar budgets, and 10% is 410,000 dollars in total amount. If you ask, you'd raise by taxes, and it's around 200,000. So in any case, we're not, we're not pushing the limit of 10%.
Well, well, except that five is, say five passes, that's actually 685,000. Because of 400 of the fund balance being, being approved for payment two, I, I don't know how that all works, if that counts towards it. Say five passes, because it needs a simple majority, you come down in the town meeting, that if the DRA rules 10%, you've got, you might have to cut like 300,000 or 400,000 out of the town overall budget, just as a thought.
We'll figure it out.
Okay, we just did article.
We did seven, we're doing eight now.
Okay, moving on to article eight then, which is the formal radio.
I move this article as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Barry?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny? Chair votes yes. Six to zero, one extension. Article nine, which is the installment on the payment for fire truck. So we have the motion.
I move article nine as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Yes. Barry? Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Now, on article 10, I'm on the CIP committee, and we recommended a different amount. So based on your calculation, I should be recusing myself on this. Or am I able to, to exercise my prerogative as a woman and change my mind?
You didn't draft, you didn't draft and vote on the warrant article. I did, that's why I'm recusing myself. You were recommending to a selectman, a particular number from the CIP, and that's just a recommendation. The number that will actually go on there is going to be the actual number, so, and that's going to change between now and maybe 15.
The 370,000 is going to change?
Oh, I'm sorry, is that the?
Because that was 10. We're looking at the roads.
The roads, yeah. That's not going to change.
We have a motion on article 10?
I'll make a motion on article 10 as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Barry?
No.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Well, I'm going to say yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Yes.
Penny? Chair votes yes. So that's going to be five, one, one. Five, one, one. Moving on to article 11, which is the permitting for the Lake Road project.
I move article 11 as written.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion. Barry?
No.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Article 12.
I move article 12 as written.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, so further discussion on the floor. Barry?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes aye.
Six, zero, one.
Article 13.
I move article 13 as written.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, so further discussion on article 13. Barry?
No.
Very good. Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Article 14.
I move article 14 as written.
I'll second.
Further discussion on 14. Barry?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Article 15.
I move article 15 as written.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, Barry?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Article 16, article 17 are non-money issues. Moving on then to article 15, and for this one, I will read the article.
It's an article nineteen.
This is article 18. The city of town will vote to raise and appropriate the budget committee recommended sum of $4,195,600 for general town operations. The selectmen recommended budget was $4,196,100. This article does not include any special or individual warrant article.
I move article 18.
Article 18 is removed and seconded, is there, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It has been seconded. So further discussion on article 18. On forthcoming, Barry?
Yes.
Barry votes yes. Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
So is that our formal vote on the budget?
That is our formal vote on the budget.
Can we, Mr. Chairman, can we revisit article four and article five? In case you didn't get a mandate. Well, I'm going to defer to the chief, but if there's an issue, we want to get to it as possible. I'd like to ask that we re-vote article four, and then we re-vote article five.
Based on?
Because I intend to vote on those articles, as a member of the budget committee. The reason I'm doing this is not to subvert any of your motives, but is to avoid any complication with DRA versus 10% warrant budget. So my intention would be to vote yes on those articles, those articles.
Well, Chip, I, I think that's a good idea, but wouldn't you also want to be fine with the others not participating votes that you did? Can I?
No.
I mean, I think your biggest objection was if you wrote no.
Right.
And I guess you're, you're being, you're being flexible on, on two of them, but not the others, I mean, maybe you should just.
I'm not flexible.
You're vouching both of them.
I don't think any of the. None of the other ones.
I thought there was.
None of the other ones are going to impact our operation as dramatically as these two. That's what I'm making.
Well, I'm a little bit, a little bit more concerned just about your, your position. I mean, I, I don't doubt that it's heartfelt, don't, don't misunderstand me, but I, I think that, you know, you're worried one half when you're a selectman. But now you're on the budget committee, and I, I, I think you, you have a perfect right to, to, to make a vote even on the budget committee. I, yeah, I hate to say you, not, not vote, that's what I'm trying to say.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion as to re-vote article five. As I was an affirmative person in that article, somebody who's affirmative on four will have to vote.
Exactly, that's the only way you could vote to reconsider.
I, I, I want to reconsider article four.
Okay, so we're going to deal first, we're going to, there's a motion on the floor to reconsider, reconsider article four, is there a second?
Does it have to be somebody who voted in favor?
No, no, the second is not what the, what the issue is. It has to, if you vote in favor of to vote to reconsider, yes. Anybody can make, anybody can second the motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, okay. So we've, we've already had our discussion.
If we re-vote on four?
This is a re-vote on article four. So start. Barry?
No.
Chip?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Ellen?
No.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
No.
Chair votes yes. So now we're dealing with a four-three, correct?
Yes. So you put here.
Moving on, do we have a motion to reconsider article five?
I made that motion.
Any of us made that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
So, looking again at article five. Barry?
No.
Chip?
Yes.
Gary?
No.
Ellen?
No, I, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Chair votes no. So that changes our vote to four-three. For public purposes, however, I would, now that we've pretty much concluded all of our official business, I would ask for a straw vote of the, of the budget committee. And this is a non-binding vote, this is just a, we have voted on two ways to police stations. I would just like to know how the budget committee feels about the process, not necessarily the process, but the project.
I'm in favor of.
I'm also in favor of the project.
Gary?
I'm in favor.
Yeah, I'm in favor of it.
Barry?
I think it could be put off for a year, until this pandemic situation.
Okay, so that's, that's a zero.
So is that, no. Under control, you know, you get to the point now where some people say, you know, we could be wearing these masks for the rest of our lives. It's like Japanese.
Well, I sure have been standing, so I, I would just like to have the record that on a straw vote, that the budget committee is in favor of the police facility project. Our questions became more as to the financing.
Thanks.
And with that, I think we have concluded our work.
Good job.
I would, and I don't want to, I don't want to call for a German yet, a German just yet, because I really want to thank Helen for her service over the years in the committee. Your graphs have been incredible.
Fantastic.
You getting down?
Yeah, I'm not ready for reelection.
Really?
Nope, and I would also like to say, as part of, as part of that, if anybody happens to be tuning in, looking at the video. Nope, and I would also like to say, as part of, as part of that, if anybody happens to be tuning in, looking at the video, we do have an open position that has not been filed for from Budget Committee. In March, I said, I would, if you have any interest, please, call a member up, see what's involved. I hate to see open positions.
Well, I would like to move a little, if nobody is on the ballot.
And with that, I would entertain a motion to, uh.
I'll move.
I'm questioning the government for all their, um, sort of leadership.
Barry?